Okay. I call this meeting of the Cedar Woolley City Council to order. Thank you all for coming. Please rise and join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I see some faces out there that I haven't seen for a while, and I talked about this at the last meeting, but since you weren't here, I'll go over it again. We have a new governance handbook, so our procedures are a little bit different. The order of the agenda has changed, and we have a provision in there that allows for public comment for agenda items that are up for first reading. So you may speak during the public comment period for items that are not first-read agenda items, or if you have a comment on a first-read agenda item, you can wait until that period, or you should wait until that period. So I know it's a little bit different, but I think it's better. It's going to give us more public input. So first up, we'll call Cheryl.
Here.
Councilmember Kinzer is out helping her mother.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here. Thank you. At this time, I appreciate a motion to excuse Councilmember Kinzer's absence.
I'd like to make him...
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Judith Dunley. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. You'll get in there, Brett, don't worry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Next up is approval of the agenda, the step that I missed last week. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
May I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Oh, just to approve... That's just the agenda. It's new. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And it carries. Item E, consent agenda. Tonight, we have items one through three.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept consent agenda items one through three.
Motion was made by Councilmember Johnson to approve the consent agenda one through three, and Chuck, were you the second on that? Councilmember Owen was the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. I bring you down to staff reports. Chief Tucker.
So just an update. Councilmember Owen asked about a overgrown lot on Ball Street. As soon as we got Laura back on vacation, she is working on getting hold of the owner, and I think city crews were going to work on that. Do you know, Aaron?
I think the city crews were going to do the portion just on the right of way.
Got it. So we're working on that, and Laura is working towards getting that mess cleaned up there. So something else that's come up recently is we've had two or three homeless camps that have been kind of centered around the Janicki Fields and that part of town. We actually have a crew out right now looking for a guy who's been taking up residence in all that building out there off Sunset Park Drive where the gym's at and all that. He's been going in there at night and moving in and trashing the place and leaving in the morning, trying to locate who that is. It's probably the guy that we found that lived just west of Janicki Fields all summer long. He had a mattress, tarp's, he had a back porch on his little homeless camp under a tree. He had a bunch of belongings. We arrested him for other issues and kind of dismantled his camp there. And we also found a camp under the bridge that's right off of Hodgins Street. They had spray painted cardboard for camouflage, and were living under the bridge like a troll. And we ended up, not knowing who that was, but we got a bunch of garbage out of there. So we're working on trying to find a, I guess, good resolution for some of that, but we've got kind of a pervasive problem that we're working on. An update on our new hire. We made our conditional job offer to Derek Lowe from North Carolina. He's had several hoops he's had to jump through before getting into the... Before getting his name put in for the equivalency academy, and he's gotten through all the testing, qualification. I think all he's got left may be a doctor's checkup, and then we'll get him hired 1st of November for a January academy date. We're going to put him to work and get him to learn in the streets and the roads. So as soon as we get him out of the academy, he'll be ready to hit the road as a patrolman. And the last thing, the Community Justice Center is now open. We still have the same restrictions that we had on the old center. I talked to the jail chief, Charlie Wen, this morning, and they have a few punch lists like things, doors that don't open appropriately, and water lines that aren't working right, and they're working on little odds and ends before getting it fully open. We're trying to work out a detail so we can actually put people in jail. That's kind of our goal, is to have a jail we can put people in, but we're not there yet, but we're getting really close. That's all I have.
Council have anything for the chief? I do have a question, although I already know the answer. It's rhetorical. So when we contact these people that you were talking about that are camping out under bridges and things, you're pointing them to resources as part of our process. Is that correct?
As is appropriate. Most of the ones that we're contacting right now, they're drug users and criminals, and we're actually contacting them as part of an arrest, and they're getting the same kind of response. But yeah, they're getting pointed in the right area. They very rarely are interested in taking advantage of said resources.
Okay, thank you. Chief Klinger.
I was asked by our new assistant chief, Wagner, if there were any other stats. You each have in your packet the stats for the previous month. Is there anything else that you would like to see added to that report? If there is, just let us know, and then we can add it in. He's also has been directed on October 25th, the next council meeting. He'll be coming to that council meeting. He's going to give you an update on... Report on GEMT money, as far as the process and what's going on with that through the city. This week is fire prevention week, so you'll see all of our guys going to all the schools this week. They've got a schedule. Today, we did the Sammish school, so the guys were up there doing that. And for those who went to the... Boot the burn stands, they grossed over a little over $28,000. So after taxes, they're still working up all their expenses. They're thinking they'll probably be able to give to the foundation somewhere around $26,000. So they're really excited. They were ecstatic with the support they got in the community and the amount of money they were able to raise, so they were real happy. So thank you for everybody that showed up and attended.
Any questions for the chief?
That's a national... That's a national thing, right? Fire Prevention Week?
Fire Prevention Week is correct, yes.
Saw them advertising that in Philadelphia. Oh, yeah.
I'm sure everybody remembers the firemen coming to their school and doing the little presentation. It's changed a little bit. The schools now, we just hit the younger grades that... We used to go all the... Most of the grades, but now we just do kindergarten, first, second, and third.
Thank you, chief. John.
Good evening. So the... Probably give you update on the grant for the 109 Jameson. We've got everything lined up for the Phase One. They're working away, so that should be done at the end of the month. Based on how that turns out, then we'll see if we can get the owner's cooperation to move forward with the Phase Two. We have been notified by Ecology that the money is available, should we want to move forward with it, and if the property owner wants to move forward with the Phase Two. So hopefully, we can get that going, Phase Two going sooner than later. And only one other thing to note. I'll be talking more later. Have a presentation for something on the agenda later. But I gave a kind reminder letter to the owner of the former Video West Building downtown that after the fire, something needs to be done with the property. We're not trying to push him. We're just trying to keep contact with him to see what he's hoping to do, and just kind of remind him that it's not going to stay like that forever. Something does need to be done sooner than later, and hopefully, we can work well with him as he hopefully decides to redevelop the site and not just fill it in and leave it blank for a while. So we'd like to see some redevelopment down there and hope to work with him to get that done.
Anything else? Thanks, John. Do you have something to me?
I'm trying to figure out how to ask, but what normally happens in cases like that? Is there a time limit, or is there a... I mean...
Well, I answer that, yes. The letter that John was talking about is a precursor to the beginning of a code enforcement action. I reached out to the owner as well. We were working, I thought, very closely together, and he's kind of faded away. Don't know if his cellphone failed, or he's on trip, or what, but the expectation is the site will be filled, graded, seeded, and the fence will be gone. So, you know, he's welcome to have a site with no building, but he's not welcome to have a site that has the grade variations, the remnants of old construction and temporary construction fencing. My expectation is that that would have been done already. So, you know, part of the challenge is, of course, the multiple insurance companies, the various adjusters, there's all sorts of issues, but there's really no reason why that site should look like that today in the heart of our downtown.
In other cases, they're not likely to have a basement. It's that basement that's really caused the problem. If there wasn't a giant pit there, we would have had them grade it out and make it a level site, and it would have been fine. We wouldn't need the fencing, but we're trying to work with them to not require them to do a whole lot of site work in advance of doing a building. If he's going to do a building, then he's going to have to do a bunch of excavating, so we're trying to avoid having to have them do duplicative work on that site. Normally, it would be, you know, a flat graded site and a lot easier to deal with. It's really that basement that throws a monkey wrench into this particular situation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Aaron?
Yeah, thank you. So the Library Pre-Design Committee met last Thursday, and is meeting again in two weeks. The architect team continues to do their current phase of the work, as well as Burt Consulting is bringing in all of the survey material and the results of the public open house, so hopefully, we'll be able to get that draft work, you know, done from the consultants and out in the not-too-distant future. Yesterday, some of us from the city and Paula Kelly from the Chamber met with the executive director of the Washington State Main Streets Program. Particular interest in considering downtown Cedar Woolley for a Main Streets city. There are 33 in the state, and the unique feature of the Main Streets Program is that it comes with a state-supported BNO tax credit. So folks who donate to this program can have 75% of their donation rebated back in the following year, which is most intriguing to me because, you know, the big challenge in any of these types of activities or organizations is the long-term sustainability. This particular program appears to have a mechanism that, you know, if it takes wing, or it could potentially be sufficient... Sufficiently supported by a combination of funding, including the tax credit funding. So I'll be working with the Business Development Committee on ideas for this and whether it makes sense to try to advance the program with the city possibly leading the way forward and making, you know, an economic commitment to the program for a period of time. The Jail Finance Committee met twice in the last month. A big issue on the agenda. I guess I should probably show you sometime. PFM Consulting, Susan Musselman has developed a model, a finance model, that we've used from the very beginning, actually before this project was born, as part of the negotiations and understanding of developing the agreements. The model looks forward probably 25 years or 30 years, and it includes all sorts of inputs from county sales tax with various assumptions, to the county's contribution to the jail under the agreement, to the Cedar Woolley special payment to the jail, to the Burlington Anacortes reverse payments from the jail, on and on and on, jail operating budget, et cetera. And it's all cross-tabbed with a... Some work that was done years ago from a consultant called Voorhees, who estimated our average daily population in the jail, plotting that forward. But what's interesting about this is, under our interlocal agreement with the county and our sister cities, who are all partners in this jail project, there's a reserve fund that has a minimum funding threshold of $3.8 million, and as long as the combination of all these dollars minus what we spend results in at least $3.8 million in the reserve fund, everything's cool. If it drops below that, then there's a call, and this particular agreement has a built-in formula, which is, you know, your usage divided by the total results in your proportionate share of any costs, and the costs are fixed in the agreement as the difference between the reserve and the $3.8 million minimum. But it's a long way of saying we've always known from the beginning of opening the jail that at some point, the city of Cedar Woolley will again have to write a check to the jail, to the county for jail services. We don't know exactly when that will be, but as we look at this model, it appears that it's going to happen sometime in the next two to five years, depending on various assumptions that we don't totally understand. That will become more certain as a result of action that we took at the Finance Committee last week. So the Jail Finance Committee is an eight-member body with a chairperson, so it's a nine-member body with four city and four county reps who jointly select a chairperson who has the ability to vote in the case of a tie. So a kind of a carefully constructed committee that requires... It's the U.S. Senate of Local Government Committees. It's a slower, more collaborative process. It has just a handful of authorities, including, you know, reviewing the annual budget, establishing bed rates for non-partners, so these would be folks like our area tribes, or Watcom County, or whoever, establishing booking fees for partners, and establishing or approving, reviewing and approving any financial decision that increases the budget, base budget by more than 10%. So the county brought us one of those this month that we worked through over the course of a couple of meetings and ultimately approved last week, and that was about a million-dollar increase in one year, a one-year jump of a million that will forever establish a new baseline to address jail medical. So taking a few extra minutes to explain that so you're not surprised in a couple of years when I say, hey, we have to start budgeting to pay for jail again. In addition to the sales tax revenue that the community voted on, there's new costs. And this cost drivers, it's really three things. One is the increasing population. Two is addressing the evolving standards of jail medical to ensure that folks receive the constitutionally required standard of care, and in fact, in some cases, something a little bit higher to address recidivism and the ability for them to engage in programming. And three, it's going to be privatized. So the move is to no longer serve through county employees, but well, the county will be hiring a contractor who's... Does this nationally. They come in and run jail medical services, and so they're going to do that for the next three years. So the one caveat to the motion that was made at the Jail Finance Committee was that the Finance Committee's approval was limited to a three-year period. We wanted to hold back our ability to review it again. County accepted that. And two, 18 months into this 36-month contract, the county will have completed a study of the best practices and best delivery models for jail medical, and we'll report that back to the committee. So there's that. And then last item on my list is just a reminder that the Cedar Woolley Candidates Forum is coming up already. It's next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, right here. Don Wick was in today to be refreshed on the protocol for that night, and we've got our group of volunteer attorneys with Pat Hayden working the clock again, so flyers went out to all of our utility customers who receive bills, and I believe we'll have all the candidates here, so hopefully, you can come too. That's all I've got tonight.
Aaron, I just had one question. I love the Main Streets idea. It's something that I've heard about for many years and always wished we could do here, but the BNO tax you were talking about, we don't have a BNO tax, so where does that credit come from?
Well, the city of Cedar Woolley does not have a local BNO tax, but the state does. It's actually a rebate on the state BNO tax, and the city itself is eligible to make a contribution and receive a rebate on our own, you know, BNO or utility tax. So in our case, we pay, I think, about $80,000 a year that would be credit-eligible.
Okay.
Now, there's not an unlimited amount of this, so the current model is... There's about... There's the capacity for each Main Street program to receive about $90,000 in donations each year that are eligible for the 75% tax credit rebate. So if you think about it, that's a pretty incredible return. You know, the community, BNO taxpayers, whether it's the city, or Peter Sound Energy, or other businesses who come to the party, you know, they can donate $90,000, and the state will mail them back a check the following year for over $70,000 of it. So that's what got me... I mean, what got me started, of course, was all the interest in downtown revitalization. What has me intrigued about this conceptually is the idea that there's the ability to fund the program. It only works, however, if there's a spark of interest. Can't be run by the city, can't be run by the Chamber. It's required to be an independent organization with its own staff, so there's got to be folks who are interested in making this vital thing happen for the downtown Main Street area, and it's very limited in scope. That's what they do.
Yeah.
So we'll... I think you're on that committee, aren't you?
Is that business development?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So stay tuned. We'll get you a more detailed briefing on that and see if there's interest in moving this forward.
I have a question about the jail medical.
Yeah.
I was curious how that... You know, who's involved in the discussion to decide whether it's privatized or not? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so the county commissioners worked with their internal team from the Skegwick County Health Department and their risk management, as well as the county risk pool. They interviewed a number of other counties to figure out how things were working, what made sense. They looked at a couple of different providers and identified a company called NAF Care as the premier provider, and they compared both the costs, but ultimately, their perspective is that the county doesn't really deliver medical anymore. Their public health department's doing less and less direct delivery, and they just didn't feel like it was working. So structurally, right now, the jail has, I think, 8.6 FTEs committed to medical, of which there's actually one FTE. They've had a difficult time recruiting and retaining people. NAF Care's model is a little different in terms of the recruitment, retainment, and probably what they pay. So they seem to think they can come in and staff it. I think there'll be 12 FTEs next year through NAF Care, and then they have access to the whole electronic records, to the NAF Care structure, the ability to video conference in, the medical doctors for specific issues. Most of jail medical is delivered by nursing staff, and so this... You get the backbone that comes with the larger entity. So the commissioners ultimately made that choice. The question presented to the Finance Committee was limited to the economic implications, but they did walk through that in some detail in terms of the risk management service delivery as well.
And Aaron, can I mention something about that as well? I was talking to Charlie this morning at Law &amp; Justice, and they had an incident or an issue either late last week or over the weekend where their local nurse that they have, that is, she won't go into the areas they need. She's just not comfortable with that, and I think that's another driving force for having a professional organization that understands the risks and is trained on the risks. The local nurse just wouldn't go into the pods to administer meds, and even with a jail staffer with them, she said that this isn't... And she just didn't feel comfortable doing it. And so that was kind of an added thing as we were finishing talking about this NAF Care.
I can understand that.
Right.
I was also curious, is there... Is it locked down, or is it... Like, if for some... Is there some way, if it's not working out eventually down the line, are you tied into this, or like, is this a trial period, or...
A three-year agreement, so there's a... There are of course provisions for the county to separate if it's not working, but the intention is that it's a... It is an initial period of three years where they commit to this project. I think the Public Hospital District is a natural partner. They weren't really interested in discussing it now, but there's no question, you know, we've got this strange anomaly in our state law where if you are a criminal who's not in handcuffs and you walk into the hospital with no money, they're obligated to provide you care, but if you're the exact same person in custody, local government now pays for your care. And there's always been that push-pull of, well, we'll just release him from custody. We'll go get the judge, sign him, get him out. You can take care of him when they're feeling better, bring him back to do their time. That works for nonviolent folks. Never works, of course, for violent folks, but, you know, for most of the city-level misdemeanor criminals, that would be a model that works. So that's my way of arguing that the hospital really has skin in the game, and whatever happens at the jail to address chronic problems, you know, whether it's, you know, the dental van, or just checkups, or getting people's blood sugar under control, whatever it may be, saves the hospital money, which saves all of us in that tax-paying pool money. So it seems like they're a natural partner in this. They weren't ready to be partners at this time, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have just one last question, since we're talking about the jail. The Chief Tucker was saying that we have limits on what we can... Who can access the jail is what we're kind of facing with our current jail. Is there a timeline when those errors in the construction will be completed?
I'll defer to the chief klinger.
Tucker?
When the jail will be fully open.
Little inside joke there.
Okay.
I lost the bet on this. I want you to know that I went down with the team, that we were going to accomplish it in our timeframe. You know, they're just working through bugs. I don't know that they actually have a timeframe, but the folks, you know, the county, the jail team wants to be open as soon as they can. They just need to make sure it's a safe environment for the COs and inmates to operate.
Well, thank you for that. Patsy?
Well, on Monday, the single team member from the Bellingham State Auditor's Office arrived to begin the annual audit. This year, as it's financial statement only, no federal audit and no compliance audit. They thought one person would do just fine. I've been extremely impressed with this young man's efficiency. He's right now anticipating he'll be able to wrap up the fieldwork on Thursday or perhaps Friday morning, assuming he doesn't come down with a flu. He was a little puny this afternoon, but anyway, things are going nicely. Due to the shortness of the audit, there will not be an entrance conference, but you'll be contacted regarding an exit conference, probably in the next two weeks or so. be contacted regarding an exit conference, probably in the next two weeks or so. At the last meeting during public comment time, a comment was made about the Skegget County Law Library and the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code Book from 2011. It appears that today, Anacortes is the only city that actually has a paper version of the code book. Everyone else, including our city, is electronic. The cost of those books is amazingly expensive, and the cost of the electronic version is much smaller by comparison. So the folks at the Law Library agreed that they'd put stickers on all the city code books saying, you know, this is outdated, some of the information is still valid, but go to, you know, whatever the individual city's website is to get the most current version of the municipal code. So I just wanted to follow up on that comment.
Thank you. Anything for Patsy? Okay, counsel, Judith.
I have nothing. I'm just gonna steal Judith's thunder. I just got back late last night, so forgive my voice. I think I actually picked up the flu going back to Philadelphia. I didn't know if I was gonna make it tonight, but I just wanted to talk about the breakfast for tomorrow morning for Community Action. They're gonna have a special guest, the mayor from Everett, Stephen, sorry, Ray Stevenson, who is the keynote speaker, who's actually heading the lawsuit against the pharma, what was that name of that pharmacy company that's about the opioids? And it's gonna be very interesting. It starts tomorrow morning at seven o'clock in the morning. During a breakfast and networking at seven, program at eight, and then a question and answer period at nine fifteen. It's at the Skegget Center, which is Christ the King in Burlington. And that's through Community Action. I'm sure everything is on their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Jermaine. Julia.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Jermaine. She is one of the recipients of the Swan Award, which is really a very high achievement. And I just want to congratulate her because that's, I think that's fantastic. And I also want to make you aware, yes, we can do that, of the Hospital Auxiliary hosts every year a, it's actually a purse auction. Men are invited, but women are usually the ones who go. And I just want to make you aware of the auction. They are starting to sell tickets. They are thirty dollars each. The auction will be November fourth. And the Hospital Auxiliary's funds will go to oncology out at United General. So it's a great program, great organization, and they have a lot of fun, and we raise a lot of money. So if you have a chance, if you have friends who might be interested by tickets, think about coming.
Chuck?
No, I don't have any. I was gonna give Mark a pat on the back, but he's not here, so I won't talk to the empty chair. I'll see him sometime this week, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Rick? Brett?
Yeah, I got a couple of big old thank yous from a couple of residents that live on Heather Lane. I know they've had some longtime issues with their street there and drainage, especially at the end in the ball. But, you know, they weren't happy with the chip seal, but they're very, very happy with the new surface. And so thank you to the city.
Okay, anything else, Brett?
Is there a way to, is that, I haven't actually driven over there to see, is that repairable? Is that?
There's a couple of divots where it wasn't hard enough yet, and people drove on it. I think they can be filled in. Nathan's gonna work up a plan for it.
Or can you just, like, roll the machine over it or something?
Well, it's hard now, so it's gotta be filled with a trowel. But it's a compound that they just mix up and pour in.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks for that. And so Chief Clinger already talked about boot the burn. It was nice to see our city support it. It was really a great function. And thanks to Rick and Julia for coming. It was a lot of fun. This week, I had a chance to meet the new Director of the Department of Emergency Management, Douglas Ten Hoopton. He's a fellow Navy man, so hopefully you'll all get a chance to welcome him to the Valley and that he'll be quick to get DEM up and running where it ought to be. It's had some challenges over the last few years, and I think he might be the right man to fix it, because we all need to work together in case we have emergencies. Aaron already talked about the candidate forum on the eighteenth at six PM. And Julia talked about Jermaine being a finalist, is that it?
A winner.
A winner? Okay. So at the Skegget Women's Alliance Network, and that dinner is gonna be out at the Squamish Lodge at five-thirty Thursday the nineteenth. So if you can get out there and support our Jermaine and all the other ladies who worked very hard to get that recognition, I'd appreciate it. So that's the end of council member and manager reports, no proclamations. We're down to public comment. So public comment, I'll remind you, is for anything that is not a first-read agenda item that you might want to comment on. So at this time, I invite you to the podium to speak for three minutes, state your name and address for the record, and remind the crowd that there never was cheering and booing and those types of things, but we had, we got a little bit away from that decorum. Remind you that that is also not allowed. Anybody up for public comment period? Going once, yes, sir.
Good evening. Carl DeYoung, resident here at 1030 Warner Street. And I just wanted to follow up. Last time I was up here talking about a storm drain that was plugged on railroad, and I wanted to thank Mark and Public Works for responding to that very quickly. And I just wanted to say thank you and give a commendation to the responsiveness. Talking with the neighbor today, they were concerned about balls being hit from the park into the skate park and some of their children hitting the ball and not seeing the ball. And so they had a question about investigating putting up some safety net, especially during baseball season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else for public comment period? Okay, this time I'll close the public comment period. Do we have a sixty-second answer for the ball problem? That's a heck of a hit, and I'll say that for a little leaguer, but we'll look into that.
Yeah, probably older kids.
That brings us now to item L, unfinished business ordinance repeal of the Cedar Rowland Municipal Code ten point forty-four point one seven-nine. This is a second reading, and it's on your packet pages thirty-four to thirty-six. If I can get there, thirty-four.
Well, nothing's changed on this draft since your last meeting. Unless there are any questions, there's really nothing else to add.
Okay, the next ordinance number is eighteen eighty-three dash seventeen. The recommended motion is at the bottom of page thirty-four.
Well, just move that we adopt ordinance eighteen seventy-three.
Eighteen eighty-three.
Eighteen eighty-three dash seventeen. An ordinance repealing SWMC ten point four-four point one seven-nine.
Motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie and seconded by Councilmember Owen to adopt ordinance eighteen eighty-three, tax seventeen, and ordinance repealing Cedar Rowland Municipal Code ten point four-four point one seven-nine. Is there further discussion?
No, it's just.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, new business. Item one, proposed amendment to Chapter two point nine of Cedar Rowland Municipal Code, consolidated planning procedures. This is a first reading. It's in your packet pages thirty-seven to fifty-seven, and that's John.
Good evening. Thank you. So Chapter two ninety is the regulations for how the planning department runs permits, so how we process our permits. So it's a lot of technical language about the procedures that we go through. Over the years, as we go through this, we find little errors and inconsistencies, and some of these are leftover from when we adopted a new Chapter two ninety, something like seven years ago. There's been some minor discrepancies that managed to not get caught for some time. And I just made a list and brought them all together. It's finally enough of them to bother to bring them to the council to address this. So the first section is on the second page of the table. You can see a shoreline substantial development permit was erroneously listed as a type-three permit. It should be a type-two, which means it's a, it has public notice, but it doesn't go to hearing or anything like that. It's mostly administrative with public notice. And similarly, zoning waivers was listed as a type-four permit, and that would require, like, council action. And zoning waivers are not intended for that. They're intended to be administrative, and in the Chapter seventeen zoning, it talks about it being administrative. So it's inconsistent with other parts of the code. So you'll see on this page the new red X showing where it should be. And the next time around, I will have the corresponding X next to it with a line through it right now that didn't get picked up in the, in the, what do you call it? The Word document, when I changed it from a Word doc to a PDF, it somehow eliminated it. I apologize. I'll correct that in the next iteration. And then the other changes are to the table that explains how many of each item needs to be submitted with each different permit. We never had planned action permits before, so I've added that to this list. And through the Planning Commission, we updated some of the numbers in other items that seemed more appropriate. Some of these numbers seem high, but we always have the option to waive them. The planning director has the option to waive the number of anything that's submitted if it's not entirely necessary, but it's good to have, in cases of larger projects, the higher number there. So kind of an administrative update, but I just walked you through the changes. If there's any questions, happy to answer them. This is a first read.
Okay, so there's twenty pages of red line, strikeouts, and changes. Thank you for all the work on that. If, counsel, as you go through those, if you have any questions, let John know, and then we'll bring it back next time. So as this is a first read, I will open the podium for public comment on this item for three minutes, and same rules apply. Anybody interested in coming to the podium for public comment on the proposed amendment to Chapter two point nine? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item two, request for street vacation at the Swift Center. It's a resolution with action requested tonight. It's on page fifty-eight to sixty-two. And I believe this is Aaron, is it not?
Yes, so if you start on page sixty-two, you can see the map that shows the right-of-way that's at question. The right-of-way is essentially, if you imagine Fruitdale Road extending due north from its, from the curve where it currently goes into the Swift Center. There's a little gap in that right-of-way, as you can see, it's kind of oval, circled in the oval there. The rest of this is a, I think it's a forty-foot by two thousand four hundred, I think, something like that, a forty by two thou, yeah, forty-foot wide, two thousand four hundred-foot long, unopened right-of-way.
So it's that area between what looks like parallel lines on the map, just for your orientation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the port detected this as part of their detailed title research prior to taking ownership of the property. The Swift Center currently doesn't include any public roads, so I'm calling this unopened right-of-way. There may be little bits where the road kind of goes onto it and off of it, but there is not actually a road built in that location. From my perspective, the city doesn't really need to own any roads up there, since the port will continue its ownership and maintenance of the roads, sewers, storm drains, all of the infrastructure on the Swift Center is currently owned by the state and will be owned by the port. So their request is really to clear the title and just to have that maximum flexibility as they move into their role as owners. Under the city's process, and it's a little different, since this is a first read with action, Cedar Woolley Municipal Code twelve point twenty point oh six oh actually requires that the city hear this at the meeting after the application, the petition is received, and that the council establish a hearing between twenty and sixty days after tonight to hear this thing. So that's the action I'm requesting of you tonight, is to adopt the resolution on page fifty-nine, which establishes a public hearing on November eighth, and also directs the city clerk to create a written notice and post it in, quote, "three of the most public places in the city," and one conspicuous place on a portion of the street or alley to be vacated. And then on November eighth, I suspect we would probably have a representative from the port here to make, you know, to kind of have that conversation. And just to kind of jump ahead, ultimately, the request from the port will be to have this vacation occur at no cost to the port. Through their process, they've identified the valuation of this to be about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The city, taking zero of that, will allow that hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in value to be credited towards the five million dollar local investment commitment that's necessary for the transfer to take place between the state and the port. So it's really no different than the work we're doing on Fruitdale Road through our partnership or, you know, any of our other joint projects at the Swift Center. It's just another piece of that puzzle. So are there any questions I can answer about the request tonight?
How are we gonna find a conspicuous place on the right-of-way? There's nothing out there.
We're not. Patsy's gonna handle that.
Oh, great.
Ah, she's delegated this to her deputy.
She has it all figured out.
Excellent. So the next resolution, counsel, is nine seventy-three, tax seventeen, and the recommended motion's at the top of page fifty-nine.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution number nine seventy-three dash seventeen, a resolution establishing a date and time to consider a petition to vacate unopened right-of-way at Swift Center.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, seconded by Councilmember...
Johnson.
They're fighting over it. Carnegie, she's the swan. It's not working. To pass Resolution nine seventy-three, tax seventeen, a resolution establishing a date and time to consider a petition to vacate unopened right-of-way at the Swift Center. Is there any further discussion?
Just a little, I think, just a little typo in the...
Yeah, we saw it.
Yeah. It's kind of funny.
It's part of our wellness program.
You're making fun of, well, never mind. Any other discussion besides pointing out our typo? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us down to item O. Anything in addition for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none, we will retire to executive session under two RCWs, RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero, subparagraph four, and RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, subparagraph one I. Being there for about twenty minutes, there is a possibility of action. And if you're not sticking around, thank you for coming.
I'm gonna figure something out. I'm gonna figure something out.
So we're back from executive at eight twenty-five for action. So we're back from executive at 8:25 for action. And to the first item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to sign the conflict waiver.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Johnson to sign the Skagit Law Group conflict waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Carnegie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Motion carries. And to the second matter, do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize Mr. Berg to... What is that?
MOU.
MOU with ASME for a permanent part-time position.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Judith Dunley, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, authorizing Mr. Berg to work on the MOU with ASME, authorizing a permanent part-time employee. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. The motion carries. Without objection, we stand adjourned.